Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. I'm just gonna say happy birthday to my sister because it's her even though she doesn't live in Rybrook, we can still say happy birthday.
Very nice.
My sister.
Is she gonna be watching this?
No, probably not. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed PBA negotiations and personnel appointments. The first item on our agenda is straight into a resolution considering a request of an extension exemption of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Washington Park Plaza.
Whereas on April 11th, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a local law creating a section of Village Code enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st through September 30th, effective May 1st of next year. And whereas under the Village Code, properties with at least five acres of property can apply to the Village Board for a full or partial exemption or extension of the local law. And whereas an application has been distributed to known eligible properties in the Village of Rybrook and also placed on the Rybrook website. And whereas on July 5th, 2023, Representatives of Washington Park Plaza submitted an application for an exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers may therefore be resolved. After consideration of the intent of the local law as well as the considerations raised in the application from Representatives of Washington Park Plaza, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Washington Park Plaza. And if the Board does it with conditions, there's the ability to add conditions if the Board so chooses.
Thank you, Chris. I'm gonna probably hold off on motion and second at this point until we figure out what we're doing here.
You should have a motion and second and then either not act because you're gonna have to then modify it again.
Okay.
It's up to you. I mean, it doesn't matter either way.
Okay, so.
Are you freelancing right now?
I think I am. Alright, so can I have a motion and second, please?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Alright, so I think we have Representatives from Washington Park Plaza. So if you could, please just introduce yourself and yourselves, sorry. If, well, I don't know if both are. I am. It's been, I missed one meeting and it all falls, it all falls to.
Excuse me, I'm very hoarse. My name is Martha Levy.
Just move the mic to you, that'd be great.
Yeah.
My name is Martha Levy. I'm the managing agent for the shopping center. And with me is Doug Menisi, who's the president of Perfection Plus, our landscaper, who clears our lot every day. And he's more able to answer your questions than I am.
Going back to the law, I've tried all different brands. None of them will withstand to do commercial property. The electric blowers are great if you have a little house to do, 50 by 100, you could use the blower and it's fine. Still will not make it for the entire house. I've tried heavy-duty batteries, light-duty batteries. I've tried products made from Still, made from Red Max, made from Echo. They all will not withstand the time that it takes to do the shopping center. The other issue I have is the batteries. I'm really afraid of the batteries because those batteries have been causing a lot of electrical fires. And I have no place to really charge them during the day, which makes it like a hardship because I would have to run them over back to my home, charge them, put them back in, and then go back out. The inverters that they make for trucks, they don't work as well either. So that's why I think the gas is the only way that we could really go to do our job and to keep the shopping center clean.
Maybe it would be helpful to understand what they use, how they.
Yeah, I was, that was gonna, that was gonna be my question as well because, you know, my understanding of the shopping center is really that there's not a lot of grass or areas that are being mowed, not many trees. So I'm just curious what, what the blowers are being used for.
What was it basically used for? The sidewalks or the curbing areas? Because people today don't use the garbage pails. They'll just drop it underground and walk away. So during the course of eight to 10 hours, it accumulates a lot of garbage. And to start picking each thing up by hand, you'll be there for the entire day to do the one shopping center. And I can't afford to do that because I have to feed my family and I can't stay at one place for eight hours a day. You know, we have to go and do what we have to do and move on to the next stop.
And if I could just clarify for the Board and for the applicant, the, so the Village of Rybrook property goes basically up to the supermarket. So right before, right up to the line of the front of the supermarket is basically where the line is. So the property that we're talking about is the parking lot area and the side strip of stores, not the supermarket back. So just wanted to clarify that.
There is a portion of the supermarket that does.
That straight line.
Yeah, it's basically a straight across there. Yeah, and then that's Portchester.
Most basically.
It's a very, very fine line.
Right, so basically, the way it stands now, you would be able to use your leaf blowers on that other section, but then the minute you kind of cross the line.
It would be electric.
It would be, you wouldn't be able to use it there.
But that's a small section compared to.
How long are you there for in the morning?
Um, it all depends. We could be there a good hour. I could be there an hour and a half. That's using.
No more than two hours usually?
No, no more than two hours.
So really, then, I guess it doesn't necessarily matter seasonally for you because you're not necessarily cleaning
Not a long time.
debris from grass or leaves. You're more cleaning up like kind of garbage and waste type of thing.
Basically papers and flyers, newspapers.
It took just one year extension, huh?
It's been very big lately.
It's to renew it every year.
Since the pandemic, we've been picking up.
Right, so and you're responsible for that, not the stores?
No, we are.
Forgive me, I just have, I'm trying to visualize this. After you've blown this paper and garbage and stuff, where does it go?
It goes into the compactor that we have down at the shopping center.
Okay.
Do you blow it into like a pile and then pick it up?
We have many piles and then we pick it up and then bring it right to the dumpster and dump it in the dumpster.
And how long are you usually using? It's just an hour, the leaf blower? Like, how long are you usually?
Well, I'm gonna say maybe half hour to an hour.
And is this daily, on a daily basis?
It's a daily basis, yes.
Half hour to an hour.
My question was answered about the, how long it takes. I mean, Stephanie trimmed it down to an hour.
Every day is different.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Weekend, you know, Friday, Friday and Sunday.
You're not blowing, I guess, the parking lot, really?
Um, sections.
Insections, okay. Nothing crazy.
You know, if it needs it, we do it.
How often are you there?
Monday through seven.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
It requires that because like I say, people are not nice. They just.
Dirt.
Throw stuff out.
Terrible garbage.
They do it right in front of us, so I mean, it's not like.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah. They see us cleaning and they will just walk by and just drop a car.
Disgusting.
Then I have a woman that comes every single day with a garbage with a big bow on it and jams up the garbage pails with her personal garbage. And we've told her numerous times, but she comes back every day. But she's an elderly woman, so we just let it go. But she actually puts a bow on it, so that's her trademark. So we know it's her garbage.
Makes it pretty.
She has two pails that she uses and no other pail but the two pails.
Does she drive there?
She come up with some characters in that business, let me tell you.
She drives a Mercedes.
And brings her garbage.
Yeah, it's just a mental thing. I think she might be a bit off.
Is she from New York or is it a different?
No, no, she's at New York Place.
Because I know that in different areas they charge for.
Yeah, for garbage.
But not in this area.
She has a New York place. I have no idea where she's from, but she comes in every single day.
That's kind of crazy.
So garbage is an ongoing thing now.
Well, no, granted, she has to keep feeding them garbage.
But people are not nice when it comes to garbage. Dump it right out the car. And think how people don't smoke that much anymore because years ago, they just actually open their door.
I know.
Shake their ashtray out.
Oh, my God.
Where the TV is.
That's horrible.
Now, tell me, that's not annoying. You just finished cleaning, and it's this far away and just.
Oh, my God.
So like I say, it will always make our lives a lot easier. You know, because you can't do it with a broom and shovel.
Right.
Or a rake. It just, you'd be there forever.
Well, you have, you have the, the, you get the prize for being the first application for an exemption that we've seen. So I think, you know, this, there's gonna be some board conversation here. I'm just not sure what, what people are thinking and.
Well, I mean, honestly, I feel like the fact that half, part of it is Portchester and they're gonna be blowing over there, it's just kind of like awkward and, you know, it's almost like there's just a line.
Well, there is a line.
Right, right, there's a line.
There's a line.
And you cross the line with a leaf blower, then all of a sudden, it's illegal. But if you're on the other side, so I kind of just feel like almost in this situation, it's a little.
Jason, if you were to grant something like this, is it, how long does it run? How long is it the grant for?
I don't think, I don't think we ever do permanent exemptions. I think it has the possibility we can set.
You could do that by condition. You could do, you could, the Board could establish its own condition on a timeframe or a sunset to come back if the Board wants to. The local law itself doesn't have a sunset.
Okay.
Okay. And then, so my, you know, and then, you know, I mean, my, my personal feeling is that you've got about a third of the lot, it looks like, that's in Portchester and about two-thirds that's in Rybrook. You know, a half an hour to an hour, you know, two blowers should be able to. Dude, I mean, I guess the, you know, we're told that the electric doesn't have as much power, but it still seems feasible to me, but I'm not in the business, so.
But it almost just seems kind of like, because on this side,
Right.
they can do whatever they want. And then on the other, then, you know, it's almost like.
Have you had any other locations where you come into this situation where you can't use the electric or you? Well, I know a lot of municipalities do require electric now, right?
Well, Scarsdale does, but we don't do anything in Scarsdale.
Yeah, Ry.
Nor there's many other people now because they're just quitting because they can't afford to do it. You can't sit there with a rake or a broom and a shovel and expect the homeowner to pay for somebody to be at their house for five hours.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, you just, you just can't do it.
Is it like, see, like, because ours is really seasonal. It's just in the summer months that we're trying not to, you know, to eliminate the gas blowers, whereas, you know, when the leaves are falling and then, you know.
Well, like I say, it's not just leaves, you know, it's not just.
I know, in your case, it's not. It's different.
It's debris. It's more debris for you.
Right, yours is a little different situation.
We do have leaves there and we do have little patches of grass, but that's not the issue.
No, for you, I know.
The issue is the garbage.
Yeah, you're in a different situation.
Right.
Yeah, so.
We need Greg to deputize him so he could arrest people who are litter bugs.
Yes.
I've been writing all day long.
I was gonna say, and if there's.
I assume I'm in the shopping center, I'll be there the entire day.
Do you assign like fines?
If there are people illegally dumping, you know, I'm sure.
What about fines for littering? Maybe you can put up like a, I guess it's not really enforceable.
We have fines, we have fines for no dumping, by the way, on Bowman Avenue. And that is one of the worst strips for dumping.
Because everyone's coming out of the Rybrook shopping center and walking down with it, yeah.
Did you see the toilet today the other day?
No.
On Bowman Avenue?
No.
You can see somebody litter, you just open their corner and just threw them out the door.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. Remember where the hot dog truck is?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
A little before where he parks, they just.
Oh, that's gross.
That's insane.
Very gross. This is what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to bring out a point on people and garbage.
Yeah.
They just don't care.
Do you guys also do sweeping in the lots?
No, we don't sweep anymore. We don't sweep anymore.
Okay.
We do it with the blowers now. Years ago, we used to use the sweepers. But they actually made too much noise.
Okay.
Yeah, I was curious about that also because of the storm drains and.
Well, MS4, that's why we're asking.
Are there toilets there, like up next to 287?
There might be some requirements for sweeping. That's why we're asking. If you want, check with Mr. Noack in the back tomorrow if you'd like to find, talk to him about it. Mr. Noack is in the back, but you can speak to him tomorrow and he'll kind of go over that with you.
He thinks that they don't speak.
No, we don't speak.
There may be requirements to sweep.
There may be. Yeah, that's why I was, yeah.
But only in part of the thing.
Well, no, MS4s are in every municipality.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's every, it's, yeah.
So, I mean, do we have to make a decision tonight or like, because we have time, I feel like? I don't know. What do we?
The reason, the reason to be, you know, to, to be prompt in our decision is that if we deny, if it's denied, it gives time for them to start to transfer the equipment over. Because it does begin in May. I mean, we're in July right now.
That's why we gave the time, yeah.
So, you know, ten months, less than a year away.
That's why we started, that's why we sent that out early to everybody so that they would
Right.
can consider whether or not they're gonna make a submission and then the Village Board can make a decision. They have plenty of time to adjust either way.
A reason to maybe think about this more is to see what other applications are coming before us and to, I mean, I think we've had a chance to think about it.
Yeah, I mean.
But to see what else is, what else is going on. My personal, you know, my personal inclination is to not grant an exemption tonight. But it doesn't mean I'm not open to potentially there being an exemption, but.
I think we have to discuss it further.
I mean, my personal take on it, I would grant an exemption just because I feel like it's, it's like literally Portchester is right there.
I, I agree with you, Stephanie.
And it's almost kind of just like a whole awkward situation there.
It's gonna be a tough enforcement problem.
They could really just kind of blow all the garbage onto the Portchester side and then go over, you know, it's just almost seems like.
Right, it's an awkward situation, but it's still in Rybrook.
Right.
Is the way I look at it.
If we can't, if you don't have to make a decision tonight, let's not make a decision now. Let's talk about, let's see, like you said, maybe some other applications will come in front of us.
It's totally up to the Board. I think what you're gonna find, though, is each one of these is gonna be a little bit different and unique. Like, you know, the shopping center across the street might be more similar, for instance.
And what are they gonna say?
But, I don't know, or if they're gonna apply, but. So, so this is, you know, I think that it's something to consider. Whether or not you make a decision tonight or in the near future, I don't know what other new information you're gonna get on the application. So the only question there is, one of the other thoughts you could consider is, say there was, if, I just heard two people in favor of an exemption. If there was going to be an exemption, since you don't have much history, you could also put a short timeframe in and come back again. You know, an exemption for the first X, whatever time period you want, and have them come back again to revisit. You'll have more experience with other applications or how it's going. But that's a choice. That's a policy decision.
Right, but we have to remember this doesn't take effect until May of 2024.
Correct.
And then it's only for the period from May to October.
Mm-hmm.
End of September.
Yeah, correct.
So, and, you know, from May 1st to September 30th.
So you could do like a one-year.
The only time.
So you could do like a one-year exemption.
That it's actually.
And then revisit it.
Active. Again, my personal opinion, I mean, to me, it's not that huge of a space. If you had two electric blowers, I think it would probably.
It doesn't sound like a landscaping issue. It's a debris problem.
Yeah.
And it's not many neighbors close, right?
Right, right, it's a marginal area.
One-year extension and then come back and revisit. I think that's fair.
I think that undertaking also some sort of community garbage philosophy. You know, signs.
That's a whole nother meaning.
No, I know, but I really think, I think that that is also what leads to a, when your area doesn't look clean and nice, it's not pretty.
How many garbage pails are out there? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, 12.
That should be sufficient.
And is there recycling also, garbage?
Yes. Separate from the garbage.
Um, the recycling of cardboard.
No, 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 recycling like.
No. People walking out of the store throwing stuff.
Had a recycling bin like that, but what happened was people threw garbage in it.
Yeah, so you just.
So it didn't work. It didn't work.
People are so aware these days. I'm just amazed.
You live every day and you really get a good feel on what goes on.
Yeah. Right, but you can't control, it's not all people from our community. It's people from all over.
No, 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 but if you put up a sign.
God knows where they come from, but.
Right, well, like this lady in the Mercedes, God knows where she comes from.
Yeah.
Right.
Put a tracker on her and see where she comes from.
Take her plate down.
I think she has a mental thing going on, so we just kind of let it go.
Right, no, I gotta.
So just to move this forward, the Board would have to, somebody would have to make a motion to either take an action, adjourn it in the future or, or to approve or disapprove. A, you know, a motion would be required for any action you want to take. It could be adjourned to a future date. You could say, if there's more information you wanted, if there's, you want to approve, recommend denying it, you can make that motion or you could recommend it be approved with conditions. Those are all choices up to the Board. And this is a little awkward because it's the first time.
Yeah.
I understand. I have one other point to bring up.
Very different use than.
The companies that you brought up, the Still, the Echo and the Red Mill, Mike?
Red Max.
Red Max. What companies did you and what is the Village using? Because you did a lot of testing on this.
Steel.
Steel, okay.
We looked at mostly steel and Husqvarna.
And how's your battery life? Hour and 45 minutes? Full throttle?
Because we're doing it this year, sir.
The, the other thing is, again.
We're walking the walk.
The other thing you might want to do is talk to Michael about getting on, getting his information if you don't have it because we do demos periodically for people too. Yeah, come down and look at them. You can try ours out and see how you like them.
When it first came out, we jumped on. You know, and every single one at full throttle, I couldn't get maybe 20 minutes to a half hour at best. I'll give you my card and call me more at best.
Sir, how many leaf blowers do you use at a time?
Uh, two is the max.
Okay.
Backpack?
I'm sorry?
The backpack ones?
Yeah, backpack.
Is that what we're using?
Yeah, backpack, yeah. Alright, so where we stand here?
Where we stand is someone needs to, I mean.
Make a motion to do something.
Make a motion. It personally sounds like I'm, I'm out. Gone to your, so someone else may need to make a motion, but, you know, I, you know, I, my personal opinion, we passed this law for a reason. And that's to try and limit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in the Village of Rybrook. And, you know, looking at this situation, I feel it can be done with electric leaf blowers. And so that, that's where I stand.
I feel like there's gonna be growing pains and, you know, it's not like we had, I feel like giving a year extension isn't, you know, like saying, oh, my God, we have to do it right now or on May 1st. I feel like it's kind of be a learning experience for all of us, including the landscapers. And I feel like we're all gonna just have to be, I don't know, I guess, a little flexible and see, I agree with you, believe me, I want to see it too. But I feel like this is not even blowing leaves. They're blowing gar, you know, it's like a whole different use. I mean, I would be open to doing a year extension and if you guys would say, you'd also be open to, you know, looking into, you know, what Michael has and.
I like to see that because everybody that's spoken to, they can't get within 20 minutes to a half hour.
Okay.
At full, at full throttle.
That's extended.
Basically, I'd love to defer any decision on this. And the reason is, until you actually try a, an electric leaf blower, you don't know what the results are gonna be on the sidewalk.
I did try it. I'm trying to tell you, I did try it.
And so I think you're gonna have to sort of meet with Michael or talk to Michael and see what he recommends. Try the specific blower that he recommends.
Well, I had Still. He said he uses Still.
And then come back to us and say, look, I tried the very leaf blower that you think is the right leaf blower for me and it doesn't work.
But all this trying becomes very costly and I went through that with the three that I bought already. And three out of three, like I say, no disrespect, but I can't believe you get an hour and 45 minutes or an hour and a half out of a full throttle battery charge. I'm shocked. Let's talk tomorrow. Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think I'd like to hear what the results of your conversation are and whether perhaps you're doing something that Michael could improve upon. And then if that still doesn't work, come back to us and renew your request for an exemption. But I'm not prepared to grant an exemption at this point in time and I'd hate to just simply deny it until I'm satisfied that you've tried what our expert says is what will probably work.
I've just been in business 45 years.
I understand.
You know, like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here if I didn't try it.
And I have a tremendous amount of faith in Michael Noack.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think that we should.
Don't repeat it, Michael.
It's gonna be the minutes in writing.
That's what I was afraid of.
I think that we should have that, you should have that conversation quickly and we should act quickly also.
So if I, a choice, if the Board wants to, then what you should do is just adjourn, not take any action and adjourn this for table to the next meeting. And then you can, in between, you can go and see what it is, make an evaluation and come back to the Board.
Stephanie?
I'm good with that.
I would table a till at meeting in August. Next meeting is two weeks.
Oh, yeah, how much time do you think you need?
Yeah, my, my bet is, I mean, we'll see what it is later. My bet is we're probably doing the first week of August. Yeah, the first, second, second Tuesday in August.
We'll put it on the meeting in August, no matter what, right?
Yeah.
So yeah, it'll be, it's basically a month to take a look.
Still give them plenty of time.
Does that work for you?
Has to be, it has to be, right?
Yeah, let's do that.
So do I have, do we need, Chris, do we need a, do we need a motion? Do we need to?
There should be a motion to table.
I would make a motion.
Can I have a motion and second, please, to adjourn this until the, the meeting in August?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
I just can't, you know, be buying blowers, buying blowers, and trying all these different things out.
No, no, no one's talking about buying and trying.
Three, four, three failed.
Man.
No, we can't, no.
Wait, how long ago?
Going to have a conversation with him. Yes.
Yeah.
It's just, it's brand new, maybe it's, maybe there's something different, so-
The man I have faith in is coming forward.
And then we'll need a vote on that, so.
No, but we could go over there with them, and if we're with them doing it, yeah. But we can't borrow, yeah. Yeah.
I like that idea, Michael.
Yeah. All right, so I think we have a motion and a second to, to adjourn to the next.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Question, is considered adjourning or tabling?
adjourning.
It doesn't matter on this one.
It's, it's basically the same thing. It's technically a motion to table, and you're adjourning it until the meeting in August.
There you go.
There I go in that case, yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, and Mayor Klein?
Yes.
We didn't know you were going to say that. I don't know, I was on the clip on that one.
All right.
I swear we don't have that one.
I like that. All right. Uh, resolution number two. Considering an agreement between the village of Rybrook and Big Red Trucks Apparatus Consultants, Inc. for fire department apparatus consultation.
Whereas the village of Rybrook is seeking to begin the process of purchasing a new fire apparatus, to replace its 2001 Salisbury fire pumper. And whereas the village of Rybrook seeks to utilize a professional consultant to help with the acquisition of new fire apparatus. And whereas the village administrator received a proposal from Big Red Trucks Apparatus Consultants, dated June 20th, 2023, to provide apparatus consultation with the village. And whereas, under the terms of the proposal, they would meet with the village personnel and provide basically all the services to replace the vehicle, including evaluation of the trucks and preparing any bids and specs in the, at a cost of $9,025. And whereas the village of Rybrook seeks to accept a proposal from this firm to provide, perform these services, now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposal dated June 20th, 2023, submitted by Big Red Trucks Apparatus Consultants at a cost of $9,025 for apparatus consultation during the duration of the acquisition process. Be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to provide the, to approve the proposal on behalf of the village of Rybrook.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Um, you know, we've talked about this before. We know that this is an important piece of equipment that we, you know, are needing to replace, and-
Yep, and this is a multi-year process. By the time they actually, everything will come back to the board once this is designed. There'll be a group, like we did last time, we'll have a committee that will prepare the specs, working with the consultant. We'll bring it back, the vote, eventually you have to go out to bid, and then there's multiple years. If it's billing built from new, from scratch, it'll take multiple years to build.
Right.
If we're able to find a demo that meets it, like we've been able to do in the past, then that's a different situation and could be sped up. But this year, we're just looking to do the design portion of it.
Right, which makes a lot of sense, and this is clearly a different consultant than we used last time.
No, it's the same one.
Oh, it is?
Just different firm.
I thought I would have remembered the name, Big Red Trucks.
It's a different name.
Okay, thank you.
That was called, it was called East West.
Okay, thank you.
Did they change their name?
Uh, no, it broke off, they each have their own company now.
Are they going to fight?
No, 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 it was harmonious.
Okay, good, all right, I'm not, I was going to say, I think I would have remembered that name.
It's, basically Jeff Gaskin is the person who-
Right, okay, great, and he did a great job for us on the, on the previous consultation, so. Yes.
I don't know, we never remember them.
Yeah, so, great.
I don't know, I don't want to know.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, so this is for the second truck we're getting that-
This is, all right, so-
The one that we have that we're using.
Ladder, which is a Quint, right? That, that's all replaced, it's in service, it's all good.
Right.
This is our other apparatus, which is our, our pumper, primarily that, uh?
Pump truck.
The pump truck, it's, it's an engine, it's basically, um, used for, and I put it in the background. The, it's used a lot less of the time.
Right.
It's used for maybe five to 10% of the calls. Uh, it's our primary vehicle for certain types of calls. Motor vehicle accidents, I put it all in the background, let me see what else. Basically, if it's a motor vehicle accident, you don't want to bring your ladder onto the highways. You want to use a different type of apparatus that has a lot more cabinets and things for like extrication and things like that, it's on it. Yep, absolutely. Um, so this goes to the primary, it's the primary vehicle for vehicle accidents, wires down, outside gas leaks, EMS calls when needed, so, but it's only represents about 5 to 10% of the calls. So we're looking at all the various options from refurbishing portions of what we have, to replacing, to demos. That'll all be part of the process we review.
Okay. Try and find what's the best fit and-
Yep, best situation for us, yep.
So then we'll have, uh, a total of three trucks, or right now we have three trucks.
We have two primary vehicles.
Yeah.
And right now, we have a backup ladder that we've, that's old reliable, I'll call it.
Old reliable, yeah, somehow it's still working.
Which we're going to keep or get rid of, and then-
As long as there's not a major cost that we have to incur.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Minor costs are fine, but we don't want to, we're not going to keep putting money into a 20, 25-year-old truck.
Right, and the hope is this, I mean, we're replacing something that's already 22 years old.
Yeah.
So, and it's going to take us, it's probably a five-year process.
Yeah, three, yeah.
Three to five-year process.
Unless you find a demo, yeah.
Um, so, you know, hopefully we get 25 years out of the next one as well.
Yeah.
And this fee, this fee this, this firm is charging us is only in the anticipation we're going to go full-blown with it? Or is he, is he?
It's a, he only charges, basically, he's charged, he's actually billed us less than what he's put in his proposals in the past, too, by the way.
With his consultation.
He's very good. So he basically comes in, what we do is we have a, we form a committee.
Mm-hmm.
And I sit on it, some of our firefighters sit on it, and Jeff Gaskin. And he basically runs through the truck to see, because some, it's a little bit different with the ladder. Ladders, you want to look at the height of the buildings in your community. Remember, what Rybrook like, looked like 20 years ago is different than it is today.
Right.
So you want to see, is this the best vehicle and the use for the community as it exists? That said, assuming it's a similar type of vehicle, literally, he, he's very good and very up to date on all the latest technologies, what's not needed and what is needed for the community that we live in. And he will literally from the ground up put a spec together. And then from that point, what we did last time, we were prepared to go out to bid. What we also search out to see if there's any demos that are extremely close to the bid or that could be modified to meet the specs that we're looking for.
Okay.
So he'll do all those pieces and has contacts and, and, you know, working relationships with all the companies.
Okay.
One thing we don't do, we never, we never earmark it towards a specific type of vehi- named vehicle.
Okay, right.
So we want it, we want it, we want, we'll put it out, and whoever's the lowest bid that meets all the specifications, that's the one we'll go with, provided it's a, you know, a quality truck.
I got you, okay, so I understand now. Okay, that makes sense.
The architect of a truck.
The architect, yeah, okay.
You're spending, you're spending a million dollars on a truck, it's good to spend ten, $9,000 on somebody to design it.
Good architect to draw.
Make sure they are getting the right thing.
Some, other communities-
Make sure you're getting the right thing.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
A large number of other communities, what they end up doing is working with a particular company's salesperson. To me, that's not the best choice.
Choice.
You'll save the money on the consultant, on a few pieces of equipment that would be, enter into that equipment that the salesperson wants to sell you that you may not need.
Right, okay.
It's a much more, better use of your money.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser? Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three. Considering an intermunicipal agreement between the village of Rybrook and the Portchester School District.
Whereas the village of Rybrook and the Portchester School District have ownership over several different facilities, fields, and equipment. And whereas, under the terms of a master, proposed master agreement, the village of Rybrook and the Portchester School District would have the ability to more efficiently share their facilities, fields, and equipment on an as-needed basis by either party from the date of execution for the next five years. And whereas the village of Rybrook seeks to enter into a proposed agreement with the Portchester School District. And whereas on June 27th, 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a waiver to allow Kenan Bean to represent both the village of Rybrook and Portchester School District on this matter. And whereas the, be it further resolved, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the proposed master agreement, subject to modification by council with Portchester School District, which will allow for more efficient sharing of the use of facilities, fields, and equipment from the date of execution for five years.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Obviously, we're always thrilled about these, and it's, and it's nice that we have such great relationships with the Blind Brook School District, the village of Portchester, the Portchester School District. It's, it's great to see our neighboring communities all getting along and sharing things, it's just, um-
It's best for the taxpayers, too.
It's best for the taxpayers, and it just makes for a great, you know, regional community, which is-
And also allows us to do it on a more nimble basis, where we could do it on, without having to wait to get an agreement and insurance. It has it all, puts it in place up front.
Good.
Any questions or comments? All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four. Can start loading. Considering actuarial services regarding G S, G A S B 7475 compliance for the valuation of post-retirement welfare benefits.
Whereas G A S B 7475 requires that the village of Rybrook do an updated actuarial valuation of post-employment welfare benefits every two years. And whereas the village's last three valuations of post-retirement welfare benefits was completed by U S I Consulting in 2014, 17, 19, and 22, actually, that's four. And whereas the village of Rybrook has received a proposal in the amount of $8,550 from U S I Consulting Group for the completion of the updated valuation, which will be effective through May 31st, 2025. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement with U S I Consult, U S I Consulting for the completion of an updated valuation of post-employment welfare benefits to comply with G A S B 7475 accounting standards.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
I was a little confused by the 800, 800. I'm just not sure.
800, 800.
The, the amounts for the 2025 and 2026, I think, or is it?
Oh, I see. That's the number, the amount of the increase, right?
Yeah. So, because if it-
For both years.
Producing a disclosure.
Yeah, mm-hmm, that's, yeah, that's to produce the disclosure forms that they have, that they also do for us.
Okay.
In 2014, there's an $800 disclosure form they prepared, and also in 2025, there's an $800 disclosure form.
Okay.
So it's additional cost for those disclosures, to prepare those disclosure forms.
All right, and that's how we get to the final number?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm confused because it says these, this must be done every two years, so we do 2014, then we go three years, 2017, two years, 2019, three years.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Can't answer that question.
We missed a year?
It may have been when it was done in the year, I don't know.
Just, you know, trying to do a little basic.
Good question.
Two years and six, five, eight months, and you-
Two years, three years.
All right, any other questions or comments? It's something we're required to do, so. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five. Considering revising a resolution approving agreements between the village of Rybrook and Dragon Tech International for information technology services.
Whereas on April 11th, the Board of Trustees approved agreements with Dragon Tech International and Dragon Tech to purchase information technology services to maintain, store, secure, and exchange electronic data, support efficient village operations. And whereas that approval was for both a managed service agreement and a network service monitoring agreement with Dragon Tech. And whereas those agreements include specific monthly costs for services that will change over time based upon the number of workstation servers. Uh, software equipment covered in the agreement are, as they're added and deleted, now therefore be resolved, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby modifies the April 11th, 2023 resolution by acknowledging approval of the agreement with Dragon Tech that contains specific monthly costs based upon the number of workstation servers, software, and other equipment that will modify over time, resulting in an estimated monthly cost of $14,222 for its IT services, beginning on May 1st, 2023, continuing through April 30th, 2025.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
So this, I mean-
Let me explain this one, because it's a little confusing. Um, last, last meeting, when we approved Dragon Tech, it had a, a month, it appeared like it was a fixed monthly cost. So when we brought it to the, which it's not, because if the, we add servers, we add workstations, that cost will go up or down depending on if they're added or deleted over time, and it changes, you know, regularly. So, uh, we just wanted to modify the agreement to satisfy any auditors later on that says why is the cost not what was approved? So this shows that it's, um, based on the agreements that have costs based on the number and, that are identified in those agreements.
Okay, so this is not a bait and switch?
No. No.
Okay.
I do have a question. Do we have a finite price reach one?
Yes, yeah, it's an itemized equipment on the addendum.
Great, thank you.
And it's in those agree, you have the backup there at the end.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
No.
Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six. Considering modifying the dates of the village board meetings in August.
Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby cancels the meetings to be held on August 8th and 22nd, and schedules a meeting to be held on a date to be determined due to summer scheduling conflicts.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
So, in, I mean, this is something we do every year, that we typically only have one meeting in August and one meeting in December. Typically, what we do is we'll cancel the second meeting in August and just meet the first. I don't know if that works for everyone with their schedule.
Could we just split it and have it the middle?
We, we could do that as well.
Well, actually, not here, the first one or the second one, I just realized.
Yeah, so I mean, if we did August 15th?
Yes, I could do that.
Would that work for everybody?
Okay.
So change the date.
It'll be Tuesday, August 15th.
Yeah, it would be, it would be just a week in between.
I might have said it one after that, September?
Yeah, it would be, it would be September 12th. So that does kind of put us right in, it gives us three weeks after our next meeting, and it'll be, uh, one, two, three, four weeks almost until the, the next one, so it does put us nearly in the middle.
August 15th.
All right. Does that work?
That works for me.
Chris?
Sure, any, any date works.
Okay.
That sounds fine to me.
All right, and there's no, and there's no other meetings that would be scheduled?
No, I didn't check that, but, um, that's right.
The planning board is meeting before that.
ARB wouldn't, zoning board would be, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and not planning, planning some Thursdays. So it should be okay.
Oh, when is the concert in the park in August?
The ninth?
The ninth.
Yep, now you're good.
Okay, then we're good. All right, so, um, can I have a motion and a second, please, to cancel both the 8th and the 22nd in August? And to schedule a meeting for August 15th?
Some of.
I moved.
Second.
I think you moved and seconded.
Because I, I seconded.
Yeah, I think we had, I think Stephanie had the first motion, and then, yeah.
You heard women.
Right. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino? Yes, Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad we were able to get that one on the books now. Resolution number seven. Considering a bid for contract number 2023-06, Fire Department Paging Alert System, paging Alerting System.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has solicited bids for contract 23-06, Fire Department Paging Alerting System. And whereas the bid for contract 23-06 was advertised in Westmore News as the official newspaper on May 26, and was also made available on the BidNet Direct Bid Systems. Uh, and whereas at 10:00 a.m., uh, 10:00 p.m., wasn't 10:00 p.m., it was 10:00 a.m., on June 9th, all bids were, uh, received were opened and summarized below. And there was two bids, one was from Goose Town Communications. The base bid was $24,428 and 7 cents, and the total is $26,428 and 7 cents. And Alcomm Systems of $5,800 is a base bid, and the total is $7,800. And whereas the village communications service coordinators reviewed the bid proposals and determined that both bidders have met the qualifications of the bid, now therefore be resolved that the village Board of Trustees awards contract 23-06 Fire Department Paging Alert System to Alcomm Systems in the amount of $7,800 as the lowest responsible bidder for this project. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
So, I, obviously, this is something extremely important that we have.
Yes, this is our alerting system.
disparity in cost. Are we getting a good product?
We've reviewed it, you know, we've, we're more familiar with Goose Town Communications, but we have checked references on Alcomm and also looked at the equipment they were providing, and it does meet the specs, and we think it'll work. Um, we're satisfied that it will work in the building. Um, we're just not familiar, as familiar with their work, but they are the lowest responsible bidder.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I know.
It's a big difference.
It sure is. That's why, that's why it wasn't on the agenda to begin with, because we wanted to make sure-
Make sure, right.
We did our due diligence.
All right, well-
Well, there's a lot of markup in some of these things, so.
Sometimes, also, sometimes vendors also think that there won't be a lot of people bidding on it, they hope to get a job, you never know. What their reasoning is.
What is the warranty on it if it doesn't work?
I couldn't speak to that tonight.
All right, as long as we're satisfied that it'll be a, a good product, and it'll last-
Satisfied that it does, it, it, it's a system that will work and provide the service we need. service we need, and it's basically the alerting system within the, within the building. And we have checked other references as well.
Okay, great. Recent references?
Michael, you know, Harrison, recent, pretty recent.
Recent, okay.
All right, well, that's good for me.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I actually have a question. What, what's the 7,800?
So what we do is we have, the 5,800 is a, is a base bid, but sometimes there's additional work we want done, or additional wiring. So what, Mike, we sometimes put in the bid is to build in an amount that would have, any amounts above that would have to be approved by the village, but there's, I think, what, 2,000, Michael, you have in there? So we, like, we already were looking at one product, and we may wanna upgrade it to a little bit higher one, so that'll allow us to authorize that and approve it. It's not for $2,000, it's for up to that amount. You get into the wiring, you see something else has to be replaced, you know, that's the kind of stuff that happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, just have a few items I wanna touch on. The National Resource Conservation Service, we have some really good news on the program, now known as the Recovery Program for Brook Lane, and they are now adding in a couple of the properties as we had hoped. Originally, they were, we had hoped to include some of the properties on Wyman and Rockridge, and they have now approved those other properties to be eligible. And as we know, the, by moving to the Recovery Program versus the Flood Plane Program, they are, we are now eligible for 100% of the cost reimbursements, not, um, there was some closing clause we would have incurred that was minimal under the other program. This also gives us more flexibility to be in control of the process, which is better for us, because, you know, we all know the timeframes can kind of take a long time with some of the federal government approvals, just takes time given their, you know, the requirements that they have to do to go through it. So there's really good news that the federal NRCS office has now approved all the project and the funding and the budget, that those funds have literally been transferred for use but to the state office of the NRCS, and that means that the money is now approved and available. Now the board is going to be considering, the next step is the board will consider an agreement at the next meeting. We sent letters out yesterday to all the residents on Brook Lane, as well as the ones who are eligible on Wyman and Rockridge, and let them know where we are in the process. So once the board approves the agreement, hopefully at the next meeting, and council's reviewing that as well as my office, then the next step would be go out and get appraisals, and then once we get the appraisals, that's when we'll really know, you know, who's in and who's out based on those numbers, 'cause that's not a negotiation. It's gonna be, here's the number, and it's either gonna be a yes or a no. So on Brook Lane right now, there was 18 eligible properties. There's currently 11 signed up. We had 12, but one was moving and removed themselves from the program. We just mailed it to, but we mailed it to all, to the full 18, the recent update letter, as seven on Wyman and six on Rockridge. There might be a few on each of those streets that might be interested, probably one or two. So that's where we are in that process. That's a big program, it's a $25 million that they've allocated towards the project. We don't expect to have to use all that, but, you know, that's if everyone participated. All 31 properties.
And there's, I'm sorry to butt in here, the people that did not sign up for it have no chance of getting in it or just.
No, that's what I'm saying. Right now, there's 11 participants on Brook Lane.
Right.
This is an opportunity for them to, to change their mind, anybody else, and you can go from 11 up to 18. So there's a total of 18 on Brook Lane, seven on Wyman, and six on Rockridge, which is a total of 31 properties that are eligible to participate. So we just mailed letters yesterday to the homeowners in those 31 properties, both to give an update to those that have applied already, they don't have to do anything new, as well as the others to say, if you're interested, they gotta contact me, and I'll give them the information to sign up.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
Events, this Friday is our second of four Ice Cream Fridays in July, so we had our first one last week, everything went really well, and we have our second one this Friday. Next Wednesday, uh, next Wednesday is Music in the Park. That starts at 6:45, and that's Andrea and the Armenian Rug Riders, which is extremely popular. I know Trustee Epstein always gets a lot of requests for that band, and she's always excited when we can lock them in and, and get them out here, and I know a lot of people ask about them. Then Saturday, on the 22nd, is gonna be our second annual food truck event. So we're gonna have our food truck event next Saturday. Excuse me, that's from 11 to 3 on Pine Ridge Park next Saturday. So we also have recreation activities and other things that go on that day to, you know, give a nice day for everybody. Hopefully, it'll be a nice weather, and everyone can have a nice day. Last year was a huge turnout and a big success.
11 to when?
From 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
After this coming Saturday?
No, next Saturday, the 22nd.
22nd.
And the, also last, the two other items, the Town of Ry has announced that they've now offered free access to the beach every, on Tuesdays. Those Tuesdays are today, July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, and August 1st. So any residents of the Town of Ry, including Rybrook residents, have free beach access at Rytown Park on those days. So it's Tuesdays are for free on those dates that I mentioned. You do have to pay for parking, or there's a bus that could, will be, is available if you contact the town, but for, um, for the beach access, that's provided for free. And now, Chief Austin also has to give an update on, some, we have some good news on our police, the metro radio, regional radio system implementation, so he has to give an update on that project.
So I just wanted to let everybody know that we went live yesterday on the new radio system, which is in conjunction with the MTA Police and Portchester Police Department, City of Ry Police Department, and us. So, and we started this program a year ago, it was just, it was this time last, last year, the, the process of procurement, and once that was done and the equipment was delivered over the winter, we realized that this was a, an enormous task to get this done, and I just really wanna acknowledge Fred C. for,